Okay, it's eight o'clock. I call to order the Special Board of Education meeting of September 21st, 2020 at eight o'clock PM. We are all virtual this evening, so I'm just going to do a roll call of Board of Education members. If you can indicate that you're here. Karina Drake, I think she just came in. Liz Flugel.
Present.
Nora Gatos.
Here.
Kathleen Holes. Rachel Ruggieri.
Here.
Don McAvoy.
Here.
Ken Schoburg. Jonathan Steckler.
Here.
All right, so I think.
I'm here.
Oh Kathleen, okay, thank you. All right, so I think Ken is the only one who is not yet with us. I'm sure he'll be.
I have to figure out now how to get my thing on. Never mind. Oh, start video. Okay. There I am.
This meeting is being recorded and will be posted on our website. Members of the public have the ability to watch the meeting through a live stream on our Board of Ed website and YouTube channel. Because this is a special meeting, there will be no public comment. Okay, our agenda item this evening is the reopening of schools. I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Susie De Silva.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I think I've been with a lot of you folks since early this morning, so thanks for hanging in there with me and my colleagues tonight. So at our last Board of Education meeting, we provided an update on what our plans were for the reopening of school, in particular at the elementary and the middle school level. We're here tonight to provide an update on those plans. With me, I have my elementary principal colleagues, middle school colleagues, and our high school colleagues, along with cabinet members, to share the work that's been done in preparation for what we share tonight. I also have Dane Street on the line as well, so that he can provide an update with respect to reopening in sports, in particular fall football. That's been a question on a lot of folks' minds. So I'm going to start off, and I'm navigating two screens myself, so if I'm not looking directly at the screen, I thank you in advance for your patience with that. In terms of our opening for, well, let me take a step back. As you know, the mitigating measures that matter most in schools through this pandemic is mask wearing, hand washing, social distancing and cohorting. And so proper social distancing has been by far the biggest challenge that we have had to navigate really over the past month, because we didn't start looking at this last week, but over the past month in terms of reopening school. We also shared last, at the last meeting, that we did feel strongly that while we wanted to welcome our children back, all of our children that are primary children, in particular K2, we felt that had the least amount of access to learning remotely, just because of the natural experience. So I'll start off that way, and then I'm going to jump right in to where we are, K5, 6, 8, and then we'll open it up to questions and at the end probably would be better. So for our preschool children, we will continue full, as we've been since the start of the year. Nothing's changing there. We have AM four days, half day, PM five days, half day. There are no implications and no immediate actions that need to be, need to be had with respect to our preschool children. Kindergarten through fifth grade, we are planning to return to full. The reason we're able to do this is because we may properly socially distance our children. And when not adequate, we've purchased polycarbonate or plexiglass in spaces where we couldn't maintain the appropriate proper social distancing, at least for the purposes of school lunch. Our plan is to bring our students back on, our kindergarten through second grade students back on September 29th, which is the Tuesday. You might remember that was the intended day all along. Our grades three through five students will return on October 5th. The reason that they're returning October 5th rather than September 29th is to allow our principals and staff to transition in our kindergarten through second grade students, understand what the halls look like, what a socially distance need to be in particular halls, who kids need to go one way versus the other, just plan for that. And allows for them to navigate the challenge that we are facing with arrival and dismissal because of the number of students that are not taking the school bus. Our grades three through five students, or actually K5, will then return on the following Monday, which is October 5th. Again, with all of our school principals, we have looked at each and every one of their spaces to ensure that we had proper social distancing. We've discussed what that distancing would look like with our local health director, Aaron's on the line, our medical advisor, the steering committee, and we are able to achieve proper social distancing, so much so that the local health director has said a go on elementary. Grade six through eight is far more complicated. So what we know about Scotts Ridge, or what I think everybody here knows about Scotts Ridge School, it was built for about 40% capacity for our middle schoolers. Right now, it is, the two, two middle schools are split 50/50. The spaces at Scotts Ridge in particular are small, even though we actually have more classes at East Ridge. The classes are a little bit bigger, the classrooms are a little bit bigger. However, even with, even with those classrooms, we are not able to properly socially distance. We've gone onsite with our facilities director, Joe, with Ed Briggs, with Aaron, with Dr. Hanaway, myself, with the principals, with measuring tapes, lots of different kinds of measuring tapes. And unfortunately, the local health director has said that we cannot properly socially distance, therefore we cannot open our middle school. So what does that mean? It means a lot of things. So right now, what that means is, well, we had surveys, let's start that way. So we had surveys both to our elementary and to our middle, our middle school families. With respect to our elementary families, we had about, as of tonight, at eight o'clock, about 1,700 parents respond. Eighty-eight percent of those elementary families are asking to return full. We have about 10 and a half percent that were already temporary remote learning and will continue that way. And we had about 1% of our population that were not temporary remote learning, but as a result of removing the hybrid option, will be temporary remote learning. We were not able to provide the hybrid option to families at the elementary level, in particular because it was just too challenging for faculty to try to navigate the many variables that come their way when it comes to materials and preparing students for the remote experience. It's very different at the elementary than it is at the middle school level. I don't have the survey in front of me, but at the middle school level, I think just about at eight o'clock or so, or a little bit before I joined this meeting, about 66% of our population was looking to return to full, leaving approximately 20% of our population, and I know our principals that are on the line know those exact numbers by school to return in a hybrid option. We were able to offer the hybrid option at the middle school, whereas we were not able to offer that at the elementary, in particular because of the level of independence for those students. Students are able to come and go, grab the materials with greater ease than perhaps a kindergarten student. So at the middle school, we worked with our principals to determine what could we do for our students at the, at the middle school who require access in order to learn. So students with IEPs, for example, or students that are receiving SRBI or MTSS, were groups of children that we're looking to bring back to full capacity. There isn't exactly a number of students or percentage, right? So you can't say, well, would, can you fit, because I've tried this. Can you fit 80% in your classroom, Principal Salem? Can you fit 65% of the kids in your classroom? Can you give me a number? It, it just doesn't work out that way, because classes, obviously, children are a part of different classes. You would have to shift one group of students to the other, to the other class. It was nearly impossible, and I have our principals here that can speak to it better than I can. All I can say is that their efforts have not gone unnoticed, probably even a few minutes before this Board of Education meeting, they were still working with as many variables, as many scenarios as they possibly could to try to achieve bringing back our students fully. Because what I do know is that our faculty and our principals know that our children learn best when they're at school. While at the same time, we had to be sure that when we bring them back, that we have made every reasonable effort to keep them as safe as possible. And so that's where we are right now. We're looking at our students in our middle school, our IEP, with IEPs coming back and our Ls, our English language learners, excuse me, and our students with, who are receiving SRBI. That brings us to about 60% capacity on a day-to-day basis. So I think I've I think I've covered all three levels. I think there'll be some natural questions that the Board of Education will have and the public will have, in particular around, if not now, then when? When would you bring back your middle school kids? When would you bring back your high school kids? And I'm not sure at this moment I could answer that question. I would say that proper social distancing is the significant variable for us. And so how we achieve that, or if that changes, and if we receive information that allows us to make a shift and perhaps decrease the social distancing in our classrooms, then certainly that would be one way. At this point, I think we are continuing to be as creative as possible and look at ways that we can bring our children back, but at this moment in time and in preparation for a return on September 29th. And with, again, in partnership with our local health director, we're not able to achieve that at our middle school. So now I'll turn it over to the board, who I'm sure has many of questions that hopefully myself or my colleagues can answer. I will, I do want to just take a moment to express my gratitude, because these folks have worked all weekend long, from morning in, morning night, returning to their schools over the weekend, looking at any opportunity that they could to find a way. And they're just, there doesn't seem to be one that we can find at this moment, and that's unfortunate, but that is where we are right now.
Okay, board questions. Raise your hand. Anyone? Go ahead, Kathleen.
I don't have a question. I think this is very prudent. Having heard that there are other schools in the Fairfield County who are having difficulties and having to make changes every night about this, I really appreciate the work you're doing on this and you're prudent, so. In terms of questions, you know, at the last board meeting, I questioned whether you were able to do the magic for the middle school, and I so appreciate that when you couldn't, that you're coming back here and being so transparent. Thank you.
Thank you. Other board members?
Thank you for the, I have a question. Yeah, so do we have any metrics on, you know, how kids are doing with the hybrid options at the higher levels in terms of, you know, any way to assess, and I'm not as much with details, but any way to assess those kids that are struggling more than they normally would because of the remote learning options? Is there any way to start kind of thinking about those cohorts a little bit differently for those kids that are really struggling that wouldn't if they were in school all day?
I'm going to just, I'm sure Dr. Greenwood has some thoughts on this as well, and I'm assuming you're thinking about the high school.
High school and middle school, frankly.
I do know. So I do know that Dr. Greenwood was prepared probably two weeks ago to send the kids a survey and collect feedback from our students to see what their experience is like. So that's definitely on the horizon. Your point about the cohorts, though, Ms. Flugel, I think is one that we are, so we even tried to process. I mean, there wasn't a scenario that this group didn't think about. We thought about four days. Was there a day, a way that we could get four days in, rather than than three? Is there a way that we could have brought, you know, two groups in for half a day, and then another two groups in for half a day? Some of it, obviously, there's the financial part of the busing, running a half day, and whether or not it's even, it even makes sense to do so. But I would say that the one, if there's one lingering piece that, that I, and I know the team is still thinking about, is where, where can we think about the cohorts differently? So somehow, some way, we can just give them a little bit more time. And time is another piece that I'll talk about a little bit in terms of teacher feedback a little bit later in this, because I think everybody is fighting for time. We just, and that's really what ultimately we want to achieve with our secondary is just a little bit more time in person. Dr. Greenwood, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, sure, you know, at the high school level, we've talked a little bit about what that might look like, and similar to what Dr. De Silva said with identified students, social education, perhaps maybe some 504 students at the middle school levels. I think we also have a bulk of students who have some hanging incompletes from the spring. And we'd like to think about bringing those students back in to make sure that everyone's on track, because otherwise that'll be, those incompletes could persist for the next three years. So I think that'd be a good population for us to look at, and we have students who had, you know, known attendance, attendance issues going into the spring. And so those would be good kids to try and make sure to reach out to and bring in. So there's definitely some cohorts we can bring back, if we're going to look at a gradual, you know, increasing in the total population at the, at the high school.
Okay. So you guys are thinking about it. That was more my question, is just thinking about those kids who might not be IEP or 504, but the situation just isn't helping. Thank you.
And Jake, something you reminded us all this morning is now is the natural time when kind of the first assessment cycle will begin for secondary. Maybe more middle school than, I'm sorry, more high school than middle school, but now, you know, we're getting into, coming into our fourth week, kids are going to start getting quizzes, kids are going to start getting teacher feedback. So that's going to be a real test of, you know, teachers know, generally, I've taught this class multiple years, this is where kids usually are at the end of the first month. So that's going to be a good indicator as well.
Great, thank you.
Susie, something I just wanted to add to your overview is that we've also had about a 5% to 6% drop in students who have elected for temporary remote learning. We were consistently at about 15% across all schools, and now we're around, around an average of 9% to 9.5%. So those kids have come back.
So that's, that's an interesting variable. So we were fortunate, knock on wood, we've had a great opening. We've been in school. I know there was, there were many of us wondering about opening as early as we did, and you know, now we're over three weeks in school and our children have been healthy, our faculty has been healthy, knock on wood, things are going well. We want to keep it that way. And so the, ultimately, the position that we're in is, is ensuring that we continue the work, the, the good work that people are doing, that our kids are doing, that our families are doing. And that was the internal struggle that we've had, as we've, we've tried, and yes, sometimes it was a half an inch in some rooms, sometimes it was a full inch. But keeping our kids safe and maintaining the momentum that we have and keeping kids in as long as we possibly can is important. And will continue to be important all along the way. And our elementary principals, they have looked at their classrooms, and yes, we have to shift some, in some classrooms, we have to shift from hexagon tables to desks where we wouldn't necessarily want to do that in, in primary education or in elementary school, but that's what's necessary. Students will be receiving polycarbonate wherever the social distancing can't be applied, so that's there. Our facilities department worked all weekend on prioritizing teacher needs around plexiglass, so those teachers who had special accommodations or teachers in kindergarten who needed plexiglass so that they could teach children sounds and words, right, with showing their mouth with the shield, that was taken care of. Teachers that were in offices that didn't have six feet or more and weren't able to socially distance, those folks were taken care of. So we took care of a lot of that over the weekend. Actually, all of that at the elementary level is, is done. We're now well on our way with middle school and high school, very small pockets of, of need there. And now we'll move on to this next phase for our elementary program. But we feel pretty good about the spaces. There were a couple of schools, Farmingville and Scotland, that needed a little bit more work around desks and things like that, but I think, I know that we'll be ready to go for the 29th.
Thank you. Karina, I think I saw your hand. Yep.
I just wanted to ask if, as you move to full opening, if there are needs that you're discovering going into that, that we need to look at, that need to be funded, that, you know, just things that are coming up that would be best practices, that would be helpful, support that might be necessary to keep, especially, I think of like the really little ones from gravitating towards each other? Or is that something that the kids are picking up on, as I've heard reported before, but I wanted to ask?
So I'll actually let Aaron speak to that in a, in a minute, because he did meet with our, those kindergarten teachers who wanted to join a session with him, because that's been the biggest challenge for primary educators. And we had a conversation with Ed Briggs around early childhood, and, and they've been very successful in early childhood education, despite the fact that these are little people that, they're like little magnets. And, you know, I can tell you at the first day of school, or maybe the second day, when I was over at Barlow Mountain, and I was helping a child come out of their car with, from their mom, he kept going for my hand, and I kept trying to move away, and he kept going for my hand. It's a natural instinct for that age child. And so I would say that for a kindergarten teacher where children are having a hard time putting their masks on and need help, or as they describe it, I can't button my pants, they come out of the bathroom, and those are very natural characteristics for primary children, it's certainly a challenge in this kind of environment where you're looking to keep a socially, a social distance. So Karina, I don't know if there's anything else you'd want to add to that?
Yeah, exactly what you're saying. I think we're encouraging the kindergarten teachers to do the best that they can, knowing that masks are the most important mitigating factor. Social distancing comes in probably third after hand washing. And again, just like you said, Dr. De Silva, it's really hard with those little ones to kind of remind them continuously, and I just reminded the kindergarten teachers, just do the best that you can. Keeping in mind that we don't have anybody in our schools who has a known case of COVID that we're sending kids home that have the sniffles, or stomach aches, or headaches, or coughs, or anything like that. So the prevalence in Fairfield County is low. We only had 4.3 new cases on a seven-day ruling average per 100,000 people through the 12th of September, and the positivity rate is low. So we've had a lot of people that we've sent for testing, both students and staff, and so far, they've all come back negative, which is great. So I've just tried to encourage and olay the concerns of the teachers by reminding them that, you know, certainly you're not working with anyone who has a known case of coronavirus. So we're doing the best that we can, but it's not a perfect, there's the art and the science of teaching, and this is more of the art, I would say.
If I could just add, Karina, to your question, with kids coming back, what do we need? You know, I think the reality is, to Aaron's point, something like hand washing is going to take up a lot of time. Something like moving around a building socially distanced is going to take a lot of time. The experience for teachers and kids, and how long it takes to get through a normal unit study, a normal lesson, any of that is going to be totally different. And that's not something the Board of Ed can help funding-wise with, but it is something that, you know, we want to make sure that is clear to, to parents and to the community, that health and safety is always going to come first, and that the progression through typical units is not going to take the amount of time that it normally would. Everything is going to take longer because we need to take the time to help and see people.
And I think that's also important for the, it's also important to note for the temporary remote learners, because they're going to have some downtime, because it's taking me 35 minutes to get my kindergarteners through a hand washing you know, technique, just to teach them, and then make sure they're doing it well and, and moving them on. So things like that, especially at this time of the year, do require just more teacher-directed time with, with kids.
Thank you. Jonathan?
Yeah, I have two questions. One, at the high school, do we still expect the high school students to go back full-time at the end of their first quarter? And the second question, at the middle school, is there any scenario where you expect the middle school students to go back full-time short of a zero-risk scenario?
If I were to answer that right now, based on the circumstances that are, that we're in right now, I would, I would have to say that at full capacity, if we're expected to properly socially distance according to what the health director is saying that we need to do, I can for sure say at the middle school, we can't do that in a five-day, full-day capacity. Does that mean we could think of it, to Liz's point earlier, Liz Flugel's point, is there something else that we're missing in terms of creativity outside of the model that we have, perhaps? We, we're also, every time we make a shift, it impacts families and it impacts a process later. And so we're really being thoughtful about when we do make a shift. Let's say we went to some other type of hybrid. And I know that many of us spent our weekends looking at what else is out there in terms of solutions to this. I could say the middle school, I don't know what would change, and I'm going to actually turn it over to, to Tim or Lisa, who has spent a lot of time, and I have more graphics and charts from Scotts Ridge than anyone should ever want or ask for, in colored pictures and whatever showing us there. But they could speak to what the dynamic that's happening in their particular school. And again, it's not that different than Trish and Tom's school. Trish and Tom's school have more classes, that's true. They have more open classes, and they are slightly bigger, but, but not significant enough. So Tim, Lisa, do you want to jump in?
Yeah, I mean, I think you've articulated it well, Susie. For us.
Your photo went away, your video, just in time to speak.
Oh. Well, that's good. Um, I think you've, you've said it, you know, for us, it's, it's the, it's the space issue, right? When, you know, when we shifted to that, that 50/50, it obviously increased the number of students coming to Scotts Ridge, so our class sizes are a lot bigger. Our classrooms are not extraordinarily large, as Joe Moritz has pointed out over and over again. And so, you know, just the other day, we had the health director walk the building with us. We all had three tape measures. We measured, I can't even, I think I can go into everybody's house now and figure out by looking what your curtain sizes are. I mean, we've done so much measuring to try to figure out how we could possibly fit students into a given space, and we're just, we're, we're stuck right now with the numbers. The math just doesn't add up, and we're asking students to be at least three feet apart in a classroom setting. It just limits the number of students we can get into that space. That's really what it comes down to.
Jonathan, the second part of your question, which is really to Dr. Greenwood. When we met with teachers, so we met with teachers last week, elementary, middle, and high, and one of the ideas that we're working through is with a small subcommittee at the high school to just think out of the box, given the circumstances that we're in. We have not measured the spaces at the high school, so I couldn't tell you whether or not the classrooms are big enough to bring back all of the students. Obviously, the cohorting is a different challenge, which.
Which, you know, in some ways with bringing back some of our other students, we lose some of that with the middle school also. But it's exactly what we have, you know, at the elementary, right? It's not that we're bringing all of our kids back. So cohorting goes by the wayside at the elementary level. That's gone now. I mean, you're cohorting by class, but you're still, you're still bringing back far greater students. Dr. Greenwood, I don't know if you have anything else to share about what you think might happen at the end of the quarter?
Sure. Yeah, we were able to actually, Susan, sorry if we didn't share it all up, but to complete some of those classroom measurements. And yes, some of the classrooms are big enough and frankly, some of them aren't, you know, the building is two pieces, as you know, from 1971 and then into early 2000s. And so when you put those two pieces together, we don't have an easy, you know, point A to point B to start measuring classrooms. Lots of nooks and crannies, different sized classrooms. And so the class sizes will be an absolute challenge. Plus our kids being nine through 12, you know, are, are mixed. Our biggest challenge probably is lunch. And so that's where we have to get creative. We're thinking about bringing the kids back in more capacity. At some point you're running so many lunch waves that you're cutting instructional time so many different ways in order to keep, you know, three kids at a lunch table. That at that point you might as well have had them home where they could have got some consistency with their classroom teacher. Uh, and then hallways, particularly in the old section are extremely narrow. If you have older kids who've been through, you know that those, those hallways are extremely tight. Um, and so again, so you start increasing passing time. And at what point do you increase passing time so much and cascade the kids out? That you've lost so much instructional time. So that's the challenge right now is to put a, a, a small but mighty group together to look at the challenges. And lay them out and try to have something, you know, back, back in front of you in, in a short term. But the, the answer to the second is we just don't have a good plan. And that's just in full transparency. But the, the truth is, you know, we're, we're working on it and that's what we're going to, we're going to keep trying to see what we can do. I think we're, it's probably more realistic to bring back some of the kids than it is to think about bringing everybody back right away.
Other board questions? Sean?
Sorry about that. When are we starting to work on the geometry at the high school? Another board member posited that it might be a great algebra class assignment.
Someone actually just brought, that's exactly how they described it was geometry at the, at the middle school. That's our next base. Sean is looking at the high school. We really, at this point was, we're focusing in on the elementary and.
I get it. We have more time.
A little bit, not much.
Yep.
It was by very quickly.
Other questions or comments?
I was just gonna.
It's just a comment, just a comment that hearing about what you're saying about K12. That's going to take more time to teach them the, the sequence of how to be in school. In some ways I see this as a gift. If teachers can think about it is it's slowing things down and teaching them empathy. Ability to wait, patience and learning life skills. So it's something we've all want for our early childhood learners. So if we can embrace that in some ways and think about it as life skills and really true. Early educational skill works and use it as a teaching, teachable moment, which I think are the most important things in schools. I would hope that it's not lost time. So I'm just, this is me just talking as someone who cares about that age.
I think that we have to look at it that way. Because I think what a lot of teachers are lamenting is the loss of the traditional ways in which they teach, which is very socially oriented. In a way that they can't proximally do now. And they're standing in front, they're standing in front of a room with kids farther away from them. And they're not pulling them into the same kind of setting that they typically do. So Kathleen, I think we have to look at it that way because we are losing out on a lot of what we built up over the last 20 or 30 years in elementary school. And how we teach, at least temporarily.
Karina, I think I saw your hand.
Yeah, I was just gonna, just so we can speak about this publicly. Cause there's some questions about, well, if what is happening now is working from, from a health perspective and Ridgefield's doing well, why change? And the other is, could you just? Explain why maybe you wouldn't want more bodies in a building like Paris for, for additional support? Like what, what would be the pros and cons of some of these suggestions and things that have been asked of us?
I'll, I'll answer the first part of the question and then I'll answer the second one, I think the best that I can. The first part of the question is, if what we're doing is working, why are we bringing them back? Because we know that students can access their learning best by being in school. That's first. And at this time, we can safely, we're not making that decision in isolation. I've been very clear. I'm not a medical doctor. I stay in my lane. So in collaboration and partnership with my colleagues. We have been able, we have been determined that we're able to, we're able to put in the layers that we've been told. Keep kids safe, masks, hand washing, cohorting as much as possible within a classroom grade level. And socially distancing in spaces where we believe that students would benefit from more, we're adding in polycarbonate and or plexiglass. So because we're able to do that at the elementary level, we're bringing children back because it makes sense to do so. Right now I would say that the data supports bringing them back. We have almost 90% of our families. And we don't even have all of our responses wanting to bring them back. And I think Dr. Hanaway alluded to this, every day there are temporary remote learners that are coming back into hybrid every single day, across every level, by the way. Because it is safe. And I will say this, it's a testament to our teachers without a doubt and to our kids and families are doing the right thing. They're not coming to school when they're sick. You know, we don't have a ton of kids in the, in the nurse's office or in the containment room. Aaron is doing a great job of tracking that. And the reason we don't is because they're not even coming in. People are doing the right thing. And if everyone continues to do that, we'll continue to be safe. That said, obviously we're, we weren't able to do that at the middle school and therefore feels a little somber tonight. You know, it wasn't exactly what I hoped for, and I know it's not exactly what my colleagues hoped for. And for all the best thinking that is on the Zoom tonight, we just couldn't achieve it and feel confident that we are bringing in our children safely. Nor did our local health director think that we could, which is why we're in this position that we're in now. Whether or not we would, we could use additional staff, I don't think there's an elementary principal here. That there isn't a para that they wouldn't want or like, right? Like of course, extra hands in an elementary school. I was there. I would love that. That said, I think right now we need to, A, try to find the staff that we can find. We had that conversation early on that we're still short paras, not because we don't have the ability to hire them, but we can't find them. That's one. Number two, I think we really need to assess what we actually need. Because not, sometimes bodies isn't what you need. And in fact, bodies can sometimes get in the way. So we just need to bless you. We just need to determine what we actually need before making a decision as to where we go next. But I, I would say that it's, at this moment, I think it's best to assess and then move from there.
Thank you. Other board questions or comments? Dr. De Silva, how will this be communicated to families?
So we will communicate tomorrow. We'll let families know. I think families predictably probably anticipate that the elementary might be coming back. I think I may have hinted with that last little quote on my weekly communication from the RPS first grader. He said, if it wasn't too outrageous, his other cohort friends were coming to school. But we will, we will communicate tomorrow. I think along the lines of communication, I think I also need to bring up. I think at the last board meeting, I was asked someone across the room whether or not we had met with all grade levels. And at that time we had not, since that time, Dr. Hanaway had sent out a feedback survey to our faculty and staff. And then we subsequently had meetings with elementary, middle and high school faculty and staff, whoever wanted to participate. By far, the most significant thread, and you heard it actually from the, from the union president last week, is the issue of time. And in all transparency, I do believe that our faculty and staff needs the time. They need the time to plan. They need the time to adjust. They need the, the time to compact curriculum, create assessments. Everything is different. You might remember I took that time away at the start of the year. I made that recommendation because we needed the 900 hours. That's not, that's not a variable now. So by far the teachers are asking for more time. In all transparency, it's a bit of a struggle, in particular at the secondary level, when I know our children are in school very little time. And so we're trying to be as creative as possible. So what you might also hear us coming back to you with on the 29th. Is not necessarily a shortened day for children, but perhaps children do go home. At some point, a couple of times a month, we haven't played it out yet, and they're engaging in either asynchronous work or flexible time so that they can do some catch up. We haven't processed it all, but by, by far, that is a theme that's resonating with our faculty is they, they need time. And this isn't from, we're hearing it from every level. So it's not just your primary teachers. You're, we're hearing it from our secondary teachers and from our middle school teachers. And so when you ask me how to communicate with families, we will communicate tomorrow to families so that they can plan. But there is that small variable that I'd like, like to at least let parents know that that may be something, a calendar shit. Or a little bit of a shift in a child's day in the near future, if we end up going down that road. Again, we just need the time to be creative here and we haven't had that time. Just hasn't been where our head could focus, but I do think that that needs, that needs to be something that's considered. Because I, I want to validate what the faculty is saying because we're hearing it. We're hearing it in every district and every community and it's no different here. And our teachers have been back at it longer than others and, you know, and haven't had much time again, because it was a shift that we intentionally made in the calendar. So that we can get our 900 hours. So that's one other piece. I think if we're moving on from the reopening of the actual physical school, I'd like to talk a little bit about athletics. Because that has been a part of the dialogue around reopening and football. And the, the recommendations from C I A C and the Department of Health and the back and forth. And I have Dane here tonight that can talk a little bit about where we are and what he would be recommending for our children here again. And we have Dr. Greenwood, just thinking along the lines of supporting the whole child, not just the academic piece. So Margaret, I don't know if you want to transition over if we still have questions around the opening of school for K8.
It looked to me like board members had all asked their questions and made comments on the last part. So I believe we can move over to athletics.
Great. Well, I will jump in at that point then and just say, hello, everyone. Good evening. Good to see everyone again. And it's a happy day for athletics. Today was officially the first day of tryouts. We have wrapped up officially our, our training and conditioning sessions that have been underway since late August. And at this point, even though we should be, you know, for some sports over a month in already. We are happy to be officially moving into that tryout period. I could tell as I was making the rounds this afternoon that coaches were smiling behind their masks. You got the whole eye thing going. So we, we could tell that it was a good day for, for coaches and for kids. A lot of people didn't know if we'd even get this far. So very happy coaches out there and, and ready to move into the next piece. So we continue to follow the C I A C guidance when it comes to all fall sports at the high school. As of today, there were fewer restrictions when it came to cohorting. And so we were able to put full teams together for the first time. And we also expanded their time restrictions from 60 minute sessions to 90 minute sessions. For the next couple of days, we will be going through tryouts at the high school. And then the preseason will run through the end of September, next Wednesday. Games are officially slated to begin on October 1st. And again, there are some different protocols put into place sport by sport. To make sure that we are allowing for a safe return to play. Some of those things can include, you know, when you talk about sports like soccer or field hockey, you know, pregame announcements where they would typically shake a coach's hand. Or post game activities where you would shake hands with the other team, things like that are ruled out. For sports like volleyball, they are required to wear masks while they're playing in the gym. So each sport has its own unique set of circumstances and we continue to follow the C I A C and D P H guidelines. To make sure that we are, are doing all those things properly and keeping kids safe. Schedules are actually still being finalized, which is crazy for me to say here at this point in September. But as we get ready to go next week, there were a few schools that were still on the fence. Are they participating? Are they not? So that is, should be happening over the course of this week. And then we look to get rolling, as I said, on October 1st. There are a few questions that are still up in the air. One of them is fan attendance at events. So there are, there's a lot of talk within our league about that topic. And I believe Dr. De Silva can chime in as well, but our league commissioner, Dave Schultz, had reached out to all superintendents for feedback in regards to fan attendance. And so right now we're still not sure exactly where we're going to land on that. There's been talk about, you know, a proposal within the league to allow for two parents for each member of the team. So that's something that's being looked at. We're also carefully considering the, the sector guidelines from the state of Connecticut, which say, you know, that you can limit. Attendance at outdoor events to 25% of capacity of the venue. So, you know, we're constantly keeping an eye on those things. And as we get through this next week, we will make decisions on that front. The big question mark, of course, is football. As most people are aware, that's been hotly debated over the course of the summer. And, and all the way through the opening of school here. Where it has finally landed is that 11 V 11 traditional football has not been approved by the Department of Public Health or sanctioned by the C I A C for this fall. So there currently is a lot of talk going on about private clubs taking place outside of school. And at the end of the day, that's not something that we are looking for support in. We have gotten feedback from our attorneys that allowing, you know, athletes to use our equipment for an outside venture. When, when the D P H and the C I C has officially said that 11 on 11 shouldn't be happening is not something that we are looking to do. However, we've continued to look at options for specifically for our football players. They are at this point, the only sport that's not able to move forward with their, with their activities as they normally would. You know, we do have cheer and dance teams that tend to perform mostly at football games, but those teams have already adjusted midstream. And are looking at the schedule to, to perform at other sporting events in the fall, whether it's soccer games, field hockey games, what have you. But when it comes back to our, our football program, we didn't want to leave our kids without an option. So I worked with our, the members of our coaching staff, head coach Kevin Callahan and the rest of his guys to come up with a plan. What would be approved and what would be something that we could offer to our kids for this fall period? And so I believe it's been shared. Margaret, would you be able to verify whether or not board members got that summary? Or the plan?
Can you share your screen, Dane?
Um, if given the ability, happy to share.
Yep. Margaret can give you the ability and you can share it. Might be easier.
Yeah, you should be able to just grab it.
Okay.
There you go. There you go.
So this was our draft proposal that we put forward. So again, this was when we first started working on this a few weeks back. This was still at the point where we didn't know if the C I C was going to get a final approval for 11 V football or not. And as it turns out, they didn't. So we're ready to move forward with plan B. Essentially what it does is it takes football, you know, one of the key pieces that we heard from our football players. The day that C I A C announced that we wouldn't have it, we met with our seniors and the first thing they said was seven on seven doesn't work for us. Because we don't want to leave our lineman out of it. You know, they truly believe in the team mentality and they, they felt like half their team wouldn't be able to participate in, in simply a seven V seven option. So that's why we, we put together this option, which includes both a seven V seven option, as well as a strength challenge skills competition. So the, essentially the, the plan is that weekly you would have a competition against another school. That is comprised of two different aspects. The first is, is a strength challenge followed by a seven V seven game. Now those could flip flop when it comes to the actual timing of the events. But when it comes to the events themselves, the strength challenge would be each team would send 25 individuals. We would set up our field with five different strength events separated all over the field. And the host school would have a list of events. We actually chose 18 different strength events that they could choose from. And the host school would notify their opponent by Monday prior to the competition, which five events would be competed that week. That way both schools have an opportunity to make sure that their kids are able to do those events safely. You know, most of them are pretty standard weightlifting events, but we just wanted to make sure that that was a, a piece of this because we do want to make sure that it's safe. To that end, none of the strength events would include max lifts that would encourage kids to, to lift maybe more than they're able to. Instead, a lot of it is based off of what's commonly known as AMRAP. It's as many reps as possible in a designated time period. And so each of the events would take five athletes from each team and they would compete at that. So for instance, if, you know, if there was a bench press in one area. We would choose a designated weight that's going to be used for that competition. And then each of the athletes for the teams would, would do as many reps as they could in a designated amount of time. The winner of that little head to head, five athletes versus five athletes would be the team that, that totaled the most. And their team would get one overall point, you know, and that would happen at five different stations on the field after each. After each each athlete had competed, you'd rotate through and go to the next event. And so at the end of of the strength piece, there would be twenty five possible points that that would add up and would be counted towards the overall team score. After that strength piece, we would go with a different set of twenty five individual athletes, so kids would not be able to compete in both pieces of in the same week. Um, and this would follow a more traditional football style game. Um, for those familiar, seven V seven is a common offseason activity where there are no linemen. And when I come back to the whole philosophy of this, the aspect of football where you have an offensive line and a defensive line faced, you know, lined up face to face for an extended amount of time during the course of a football game is really what ratchets uh, football into the high risk category as far as the NFHS is concerned. What a seven V seven game does is it takes the lineman out of the game. The only lineman that's that is there is the um, the center who snaps the ball. And then um, there's a series of offensive players, quarterback, five wide receivers, and there are seven defensive players that can play in whatever capacity uh, they would like. It's not tackle, it's one hand touch. Um, and so as soon as uh, if if the pass is caught, as soon as that receiver is touched with one hand, he's he's down. Um, so there isn't that same level of contact that you get on eleven on eleven. Our plan here, and I don't, I don't want to spend too much time going through all the details, but essentially we took a a traditional seven on seven format, and again, trying to design it so that we didn't leave anyone out. We included some aspects of the kicking game, which is not something that typically happens in a seven on seven. Um, a lot of the rules are the same in terms of down and distance, when they're going to punt the ball, if they can go for field goals, extra points, those sorts of things. Um, but it is a shorter game. It's uh, four fifteen minute periods on a running clock. And um, we would still have officials, we would still have the ability to, you know, host schools for that for for a game as well as travel to to schools for a competition at their site. What we liked about this plan is that overall, the competition winner each week is the combination of the the points that are amassed during the strength challenge and the seven V seven game. You know, what we heard from our student athletes in football in particular is they're missing that opportunity. They're they're used to the Friday night lights. They're used to that big team activity, that camaraderie and that brotherhood that they get from the football team and and being a part of it. And so this is the closest we can get to provide that um, without the the ability to do uh, full contact eleven on eleven football. We did include some accommodations for sub varsity. This is certainly a model that could be applied at the sub varsity level as well. A couple of changes in the course of the way the game is played just because of of time and not quite sure for those, all the schools opting in, if they would have enough athletes to do both a varsity JV and freshman game. So this gives some opportunities for um, schools that may have smaller rosters to be able to um, to compete. So that's essentially the plan. Um, I had proposed that uh, you know, sort of behind the scenes while we were waiting for this whole thing to play out uh, to the the league commissioner in the F C Act, and we've had a lot of talk about it at the A D level. As um, you know, unfortunately, as as our our fears became reality and and the plug was pulled on football, um, we actually kicked this over to the state, to the C I A C. And um, as of this weekend, they turned it around and sent it out to all the athletic directors in the state and said, this is exactly the type of thing that we are thinking is acceptable. And so um, that made me feel pretty good. I think we did a nice job planning this. Um, so there are, you know, there is support for this. Um, one of the questions that was asked is, you know, what's the difference between seven V seven and and eleven V eleven? Obviously, I I just kind of described on the physical field what the difference is. When it comes to the view of the Department of Public Health and the C I A C, um, they defer to the NFHS standards, the National Federation of High Schools. And that's the group that initially put out the high risk, moderate risk, low risk levels for each individual sport. Eleven V eleven football has always been considered a high risk sport. Even with the accommodations that the C I C tried to put in place to save it, um, the NFHS did not change their stance on that. However, seven V seven has always been, ever since that list came out in May, a moderate risk sport. And so it's at the same level of risk as soccer and volleyball and field hockey, all of which are going with um, with the correct accommodations at this point. So um, really, tonight, we wanted to bring it to you and let you know, this is our, this is what we're planning on doing moving forward for football. Um, at this point, it's, there's only one real question left for us to answer, which is whether or not this is going to be something that is sort of sanctioned at the league level, or if it's going to be happening independent of the F C Act. And really, all that comes down to is whether or not schools are are going to choose to opt in. If there aren't enough schools within our league that choose to opt into this plan, um, I've already been approached by a number of schools outside of the F C Act who who want in. So um, you know, finding the opponents is not going to be an issue. It's really just a matter of of making sure that we set it up properly and execute it well. Um, the last thing I'll add, just on, you know, on in terms of of COVID and and protocols, is that all of the strength pieces, we would continue to use the same cleaning protocols and everything else that we've used successfully with our weight training programs since July sixth. You know, we've had upwards of a hundred athletes lifting weights every day of the week. And um, you know, we have not, like the schools, it's been a a smooth opening. We haven't had any issues. So um, that's our plan, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Dane. I I see Rachel's hand.
I just have really a comment. Um, thank you so much, Dane. I I just want to publicly acknowledge your efforts and the coaches and say thank you. Um, thank you for your diligence in development of this plan um, and your devotion to our students. Um, I know how they must feel, and um, sports is definitely an extension of the classroom, and stay safe and have fun.
Thanks, Rachel, and I'll just echo that. I mean, one of the pieces that's so important to these kids is that team aspect and their camaraderie, and you can tell that they were missing it. And the other piece is like, kids love to compete. I was talking with Dr. Greenwood, and I I saw a video last year about a baseball game that had been rained out, and maybe some of you saw this. It went viral because they started a a rock, paper, scissors competition. And that's how they passed the time, like they want to compete. Our kids want to compete. And if we, if we had the ability to offer them eleven on eleven in the school setting where we were able to control it, we would absolutely do that. Since we can't do that, we feel like this is our next best option, and it's something that allows our kids to to enjoy aspects of the game they love. And most importantly, it's it's just good for their mental health and and their physical health to be out there working towards something. So I'm happy to put in the time, and I and I do want to make sure everyone knows this is not a solo effort here. This took a lot of collaboration from our coaching staff. Um, you know, we all sat down and looked at it together, and and um, I'm really proud of the work those guys put into it as well.
Other board questions or comments? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna pile on a little bit. Um, that's a really creative option. I am proud to be part of Ridgefield Schools. Uh, you guys coming up with that. Uh, I know there's a lot of angst in the community. Football is not just for the kids, it's for the community too, as it turns out. And a lot of parents are very, very concerned about this, especially those seniors, but um, way beyond that, and I think um, you've come up with the best case scenario in a really tough situation, and I appreciate the creativity and innovation there, and I appreciate that you're um, probably put in a ton of hours to get this through to the rest of the schools in Connecticut as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Other board questions or comments? Go ahead, Karina.
Um, I think the innovation is great too, Dane, before I I start. So I echo that. I just have a couple of questions. So if if other schools didn't opt in, right? Would this still run at in like a club way for our own students? Could we still, could you still run this ourselves so they would still have that camaraderie you were talking about? Even if it wasn't into scholastic?
Um, yeah, theoretically, we could. I'm I'm not concerned about schools opting in. I think that that's, you know, like I said, I've already been approached by schools outside of our league that if if we don't end up doing this within the league, there are schools that are interested in doing it. Um, but to answer your question, sure, it could happen on an intramural level. Um, I think it's it's important to be clear about the use of the term club right now because club football is being tossed around in the media quite a bit. And so um, to be clear on that, any of these private clubs that are coming up with eleven V eleven football options are not connected to the schools in any way, shape or form. And so that's one of the the things that remains to be seen is which districts are or which communities really, because again, it's not connected to the school. Which communities are going to be supportive of this option that we are coming forward with? And which communities are going to choose to opt out of this and pursue one of these private club options? There are a handful of private club options that are popping up over over the entire state right now. Um, my own personal opinion is that there's just, there's not enough time to to safely pull something together. Um, and quite frankly, even if they did, it still goes against the Department of Public Health guidelines and and recommendations. So you know, districts that choose to pursue that, you know, clearly, that's that's a decision that the community members are going to to make. And we may have individual athletes within our program who choose to pursue that on their own. They won't be using any of our equipment, and they won't be doing it, you know, with our blessing, but that's perfectly within their rights. Um, what we felt was it was important to come up with an alternative for our kids to to buy into and for our kids to be together. Um, so a little bit of a long winded answer, but the the short answer is yes, we could do it internally with just our own kids if that's what we decided to do.
Yeah, I I was alluding more to like um, just in in house if another, another high school's shut down for fourteen days. Will they still have an option to come together and do some of these competitions themselves, and we would still provide them that time and space to do it? Um, because I think that that part for them is the important part. Like you're talking about the rock, paper, scissors part. That's that's what I meant. I didn't mean private clubs.
Yeah, no, absolutely. But I I would also say, you know, it's it's a different thing when you're competing against Wilton than it is competing against your teammates. You know, and so if we can provide the opportunity for them to compete against other schools, obviously, that would be the the preferred choice.
Um, my other question is, just to be clear, private clubs will not be using our fields?
So uh, Dr. De Silva and I meet with uh, the first selectman on a biweekly basis right now to discuss these very topics. We meet with him again tomorrow. Um, you know, at this point, Tiger Hollow is a public facility. It's used for all sorts of different events. Um, and so tomorrow, that definitely will be a topic of our conversation is to say, what is the town stance on the use of those fields?
And then I don't know if you if you're prepared to discuss this now, but as these as things could change, are we prepared as far as funding? Because this became muddled last year. And it becomes difficult for the board when the funds are all together. And then if programs don't run, if sports programs don't run, on the academic side, that money gets returned to the town, but on the sports side, it didn't. And then we have a lot of needs on the academic side. And I know that um, Mr. Steckler mentioned in his subcommittee meeting that if that were to happen, that it might be responsible and fiscally responsible of our board to fund than less that amount that's left over if it's not going to go back to the town, because it just doesn't seem fair. So I just wanted to throw that out there because it has been mentioned, and I don't know if there's any mechanisms for correction yet, or if anyone's thought of it yet. Maybe you have, but I just wanted to ask.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's part of a bigger conversation. As we all know, the athletics budget includes revenue sources from a couple of different streams, one of the biggest pieces of which is the Board of Education. Um, as I've said publicly at a a number of meetings, I'm perfectly willing to look at any options, you know, I think part of what makes it difficult right now is the fact that our pay to participate money gets mixed in with the Board of Ed funds in the athletics budget. If that's something that we feel we need to separate, it might provide us with some clarity. Um, but right now they are mixed together. As far as this year in particular, um, you know, all we can do at the moment, and I know it's not a great answer, but all we can do is continue to to move forward and keep an eye on on how these adjustments that we have to put into place impact the budgeted dollars. You know, obviously, with this fall, not even having games underway yet, there are going to be savings on the athletic side in certain areas. You know, the the most that we, any of our teams will compete this fall is twelve games. I mean, we've had situations, you know, where our girls soccer team that wins a state title plays in twenty something games in a year. So there's definitely going to be some savings on the athletic side right now. Um, I'm not prepared at the moment to say, you know, how, what the mechanisms are for where that money goes or how it flows. Um, but that's certainly something that we will be keeping an eye on as we work our way through this unprecedented year.
Thank you. Other questions or comments?
Margaret, I had one.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Ken.
Yeah, uh, Dane, just back on the the seventy seven. If if one of our players does opt to participate in in one of these eleven uh, the club teams, would they also be allowed to participate in the R seven V seven?
My answer to that would be yes. Uh, they won't be using any of our equipment, and so that's really the the distinguishing point. Um, you know, in all the press release from the the C I C, they actually brought up the sport of girls ice hockey, which is a little bit unique because it is not um, it is not overseen by by the C I C. So in the sport of girls ice hockey, athletes are actually able to compete with their high school program as well as a club team in the same season. Um, it, for all the sports that are under the C I C jurisdiction, they do not allow that to to compete for both your high school and a a team, a separate team in the same sport in the same season. However, given the circumstance that we're in this fall, the C I C actually did give that blessing to say athletes would be allowed under their, you know, under their viewpoint to compete in both. If we felt like that was something that was important to us to to distinguish, we could, we could talk about that.
I I'm just curious, the the rationale behind that, because if if the challenge is that the eleven V eleven is is that because they have that much more face time? Then would that, would a child or a student who's participating in that be at a higher risk of of being asymptomatic and then spreading that to the the students who aren't participating on the club team?
Yeah, I mean, that's certainly a possibility, but I can say, Ken, that right now, what all of our athletes and even just students at the high school are doing on their own private time is not something that we can track. So, you know, the fact
But in this case, we, in this case, we could track it.
I suppose. So so it, you know, just to play devil's advocate, or would would your suggestion be that if they play eleven on eleven football, we're not going to let them come to school?
I if if they travel to, if 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 a student travels to a a hotspot or international travel, there there are restrictions on on them returning to school.
Yeah, I mean, I I'm I'm open to the conversation. Um, at this point,
I I mean, I'm just curious if if, because if if the state says that that one or they organize, excuse me, the C I C says that one is is dangerous, but then allows that or or a higher risk, not dangerous, but higher risk. And then and then that higher risk student then is is put back into the 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 lower risk population. I I'm just wondering what the logic behind that is. Why not then just allow eleven V eleven?
Yeah, I mean, I think that you know, I can't speak for all the decisions at the C I C and the D P. What I can say is that I I think what they truly view is is lining up and and being face to face like that, it it leads to the potential for more spread from one community to another. Um, you know, as far as drawing the line and saying anyone who's going to participate in any sort of private club is not going to participate for us. That's not really a distinction that we had, we had tried to draw. Um, and honestly, when I try to get a sense of our football community, I think um, once we have some direction for them, they'll be happy uh, because up to this point, they haven't had any direction, and they haven't, you know, they've been, I give credit to the kids. They've been coming to practice, you know, every day without really knowing what they're practicing for at this point. So if we go forward and give them something to focus on and something to to prepare for, I think that they will be very happy to have that opportunity to be with their teammates and and share that common experience. Um, and if there are some that choose to go out and and take part in a in a, you know, a higher risk situation, you know, again, I would say that's, I would believe that's happening right now. You know, we just don't know it. So if we if we wanted to track that and and draw a line, then I'd be open to having that conversation.
Nora, I think I saw your hand earlier.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo some of the earlier comments. Really applaud you, Dane, and Coach Callahan and the other coaches for your creativity. Um, I love the plan. I think it's so smart and well thought out. And it's really inclusive of all the players and positions. Um, and it's motivating. To your last point, um, these players have been working out tirelessly from the spring to the summer to the early fall, and now they're going to have a venue to showcase all that hard work in a performance type competition. It's uh, every player's dream. So thank you for all your hard work and to the coaches for giving the boys this opportunity.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Margaret.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm sorry. My connection got really bad there, so I did miss the last uh, thing that you you said, Dane, but I also wanted to echo everyone's um, or the people that have spoken so far about it. I I think a lot of um, creative planning has gone into solving this seemingly unsolvable uh, problem, especially for the the football athletes. Um, so I I do want to uh, commend you for that work and and your coaches also.
Thanks, Ken.
Any other board member questions or comments? Yeah, I'll just add my thank you for uh, again, for your creativity and innovation. I'll pile on with everybody else's comments. And then I just had a And I just had a little question. I don't think it has much bearing, but you mentioned that one of the outstanding issues is or questions. Is will this be sanctioned at the league level by the C I C? Sounds like, I just want to understand what the implications of that might be. Does it help us or whatever? It sounds like this will move ahead anyway, but I just wondered what that level of sanctioning allows for.
Yeah, it's really just the scheduling piece more than anything. And so so just to reiterate, this plan did receive the approval of the C I C, which is our state governing body. The the question right now is within our league, within the F C I C, the F C A C, Fairfield County. Organization as to whether or not we are moving forward as a league in this. And really, the only implication is from a scheduling one. If it if it does, you know, if we do get enough schools within the league to buy in. Essentially, our schedule of events would only include the same schools that we are competing against in all the other fall sports. Whereas if there aren't enough schools opting in, you know, right now, the the F C A C has three different regions for competition this fall. Based off of the C I C recommendation for regionalization. So right now, we are in a a central region that's comprised basically of the Route Seven schools. So it's Danbury, us, Wilton, Norwalk, McMahon, and Staples. So if those six schools all opt in, then there's, you know, we have five opponents ready to go. If those schools don't opt in, or the worst case scenario is if within one of those regions, there's a number of schools who don't opt in. It doesn't make sense for the same two teams to be competing week after week after week. And so in that case, the the league would say, this is something we think is a good idea, but we're not running it as a league event. And at that point, it would be up to us to go out and schedule whichever opponents we would like. So that's really the only difference at this point.
Great, thank you. Okay, any other questions or comments from board members? Thank you, Dane. Thanks, Dane. Well done. He's out. Just like that, gone. Oh, you're back. I was complimenting you, but you left. Oh, well. For tomorrow. Well done, Dane. Is there anything else that we have from a reopening standpoint, Dr. De Silva?
I think we touched upon it all. I'm just gonna look to Dr. Hanaway just to see if I missed anything. The the one thing that families should be prepared for K five is that they'll hear from their building level principal about staggering rival dismissal times. As they learn a little bit more K two, three, five. So that's something that parents can expect, and I'll share that in the communication that we send out to families tomorrow.
And do do the elementary schools have their open houses this week? I would assume it's being discussed then as well.
They're having them this week, yeah.
Okay, I think that's it, unless there's any outstanding questions or comments from anyone. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn? Kathleen, do I have a second? Ken, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone, for all of your hard work.
Thank you, everyone.